Thank you guys for being here tonight. Today is March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We're here today for the second part of our work session for our partner master plan. Tonight, we want to take an opportunity to thank all of y'all for being here tonight. I'm gonna ask if Commissioner Henderson will lead us in our implication and Commissioner Edwards would lead us in our pledge.
Thank you. Thank you. Dear Father, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We come just thanking for just allowing us to be here this evening to conduct your business. We just thank you. This we pray in the Lord's name, amen.
Amen. Before we get going, I want to take an opportunity to welcome Mr. Jarvis Sims tonight, the new interim county manager, sir. So glad to have you tonight. You got anything you want to say before we get started?
First of all, I would like to say I'm very thankful and honored to serve as the interim county manager for Newton County. I'm committed to serve Newton County as a public servant leader who places Newton County values and traditions at the core while also embracing innovative ideas. I look forward to working with the commissioners, elected officials, department heads, and staff, as well as the community and business leaders to build on the successes that Newton County has achieved thus far. We are One Newton. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dwayne, we're gonna ask if you would to bring, come on up, you and your team, tonight. I want to thank you guys for the presentation that you gave last, I think it was last week. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you so much for doing that. And tonight, I'm sure that the commissioners have questions that they want to ask tonight. Do you guys want, y'all want to start off? I know y'all got some things y'all want to say before we open it up to the commissioners?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you commissioners for your time this evening. I'm gonna kinda just turn it over to Aaron and Katie. I would like to say thank you to the board for allowing us to have this plan done. There's been a lot of good information come out of it, and I think as y'all get a chance to look at it, you'll kinda see that, and Aaron can help me here from Rome. But I think after tonight, we have one more, we have a public meeting next Thursday night at six-thirty at Turner Lake, and that'll give the citizens a chance to come in, view the plan, ask any questions, and then Aaron will tweak whatever he needs to from tonight and from next Thursday, and hopefully he's planning on trying to wrap this up here in the next three or four weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Aaron, and Katie for being here tonight. Before we get started, do you guys have anything you want to say?
Other than I know that the, our last meeting, we went through a terrible amount of information in a relatively short period of time, so that I hope it was useful. I believe that you all are in receipt of the presentation, those initial findings and recommendations, so we look forward to being able to answer any questions or concerns or hear any comments that you have regarding where we are in this planning process so that we can make the necessary refinements in order to better serve the community going forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, sir, if there's any questions or comments.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I don't know who want to start off? Any questions, guys?
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. C.
Yes, sir.
A question, the question that I have is that I heard what you said last, last time you was here, and I kept thinking to myself, I said, well, whatever happened to the, to the plans that, that from the other master plans that were originally had been taken up and talked about and promised, but nobody had the funding for it? And the plan that I'm referring to is the two thousand, two thousand five master plan, and it focused on the inner-city kids. It focused on moving our park from Jeffson Street to higher ground, and I think even though the master plan said that there was no money behind it, it was in fact that you got a, we got like a one point five spots allotment about property and stuff, it moves the same as the two thousand five master plan had, had said, but also in two thousand master plan that was promised to the inner-city in town. It was, and I think the plan that the late Cheryl Depp Franklin had done, she was for Mr. Jeff, and the plan was for a football field and then a track that goes around it. And it just seemed like, and I was listening, it seemed like we just had forgot about that, and I'm trying to figure out, how can we get that back on track, get that done, keep the promise that had been made, and get that done, so we can kinda move on?
As I recall with you, I recall what you were talking about, in that, in our recommendations, there was, there was that, I call it, I think it was the Highway thirty-six park development, that believed had the, had an opportunity for some sort of an outdoor, open lawn area that could be developed into a multipurpose field, potentially with a track. It was not clear in the previous plan exactly what the impetus was behind the track, because a track has a very specific set of programming related to it. So if that is still a need, that wasn't necessarily something that came out of our communications with staff or with the public in that, in that phrase, so that's definitely something that we can look at. My, what I would be interested in seeing, especially for the specific area that you are referring to, is we had one recommendation that wasn't necessarily pointed out, and that was reassessing some site planning initiatives associated with the Nelson Heights Community Center. Internally, talking with my team, as well as talking with, with the park staff, we see that as an opportunity that is ideally located in order to develop some sort of facility that could be brought to a next level to better serve inner-city youth in that area, and that may, that may include a field with a track, things along those lines. I think all of that is warranted. I think before, that's seriously, I think there needs to be an additional planning study in terms of like a site master plan to get a effective layout of how that might work out, so that we're not necessarily putting a field on one side of the street relative to parking and things along those lines. So I think there needs to be a little bit more comprehensive view of how that might be addressed in that particular part of the county that you're referring to.
Question?
Thank, thank you, if I may. Well, I just, you know, I'm a type person, I mean, I'm, since I'm the, used to be the youngest on this board, and I'm the oldest, you know, I believe in, like, if you give your word, if you, if you do a plan, and this is before your time, you know, and you don't keep your word, then, you know, when the overlord said, well, then you really not hitting on too much, and this, you know, this is my own personal, personal opinion about that, and the word was given, it just didn't have the funding. And when we finally got, you know, a chance, I keep other stuff that we do here on, on this board, we promised the people that we were gonna give a, a lawyer, you know, in-house attorney. We never did it. So what I think we need to do as a board is thought, when something is done, then we should do it. Now, now we come back, but a few years later, say ten, twelve years later, and say, whoa, no, we don't want to do it on that side, it's no, no longer feasible, but it was feasible then. And so what we're gonna tell them, say, hey, look here, his board growth down a little further on thirty-sixth where they've been all them apartments at, and we just gonna abandon what we said we were gonna do for you. We also gonna abandon the fact that the city of Covington has, has worked out and did a plan that would connect, I think Central Park, I think that's the name of it, Central Park with Nelson Heights Community Center, with all the amenities and stuff, and then you're not gonna do, we're not gonna do our part, as far as we're saying. I couldn't understand that. I mean, I may not be that merge, this old man, but I keep my word.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you for your input, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, sir. You said there were like a hundred that actually participated in the whole survey? Was it a hundred citizens?
In the total, in the total public input process, there was a little over a hundred. But we had somewhere around sixty participants online, and somewhere around thirty to forty in person at the meetings.
My only concern, that's only point zero nine percent of a population of a hundred and thirteen thousand people, and we're missing the youth. Have you ever thought about, and I don't know if this actually came about, of going into the school system, maybe working with the superintendent to maybe take time out in the school system where the kids can do, the youth can do a survey and decide on what they want, because Newton County is getting younger, it's not getting older. So a lot of the things proposed actually cater to us Generation Xers and some of our Baby Boomers, but you have a lot of the Centenials and Millennials are not being looked at. So that was my only concern with the master plan, it was a little bit older, and I don't have a problem with it, but for those who are actually gonna be coming to Newton County now, our younger generation, we need to find out what they want, because a hundred participants are making a plan off of a hundred out of a hundred and thirteen thousand, which is not even one percent. One percent is one thousand, one thousand one hundred and thirty-three. So we have to kinda go back and bring in that youth. So my suggestion is maybe going into the school system, talking to the superintendents and say, may, hey, maybe we can, in all the school system, do a survey with all the youth in, in the school system, a short survey, and then they have a short attention span, you don't want to do nothing long, and maybe see what they want, what type of activities they want, so that would help us a little bit with some of the recreation. So that was one of my, my number one concerns, we didn't reach the youth. And the other one was, how would you roll it out? Like which, in, which districts would you start in? Would you start in the most underserved districts that don't have a lot of these parks and rec? Or are you gonna do it as a whole? Because that's finances that has to come to play when you're trying to roll out a whole lot of projects at one time. So that's gonna be my second concern, is how is this actually gonna be rolled out? So if we can look at that and let us know, what is your plan of how do you implement it, putting the plan into action, that's, that's a big, huge step. And I think that was all of my, my questions so far.
Okay. The, I would, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to get with Jeff and the, and the rest of the staff team about, talking about how we could get some supplemental information from the schools, from the students or youth. I, I agree. Public participation these days in a lot of these types of forums is drastically lower, even on the, even on online platform than we're accustomed to. So I do think that that might be a warranted study, to try to get some more information, especially for such a large chunk of the demographic here in the community. In terms of rollout, and this is my initial thoughts, and I'm, I'm totally open to you and to your park staff thoughts, we need to, we need to incorporate buy-in from the community, period, because what we are talking about is a large capital program, and to reiterate, you know, what Commissioner Henderson was saying, is that if, if recommendations and promises are made, but they're not followed through, then where is the support? How is this community going to financially support the decisions that are in this plan? So what we always like to do, and this is why it's structured tentatively in our plan, is that we still have a significant backlog of deferred maintenance and upgrades in our existing facilities. And in our minds, as always, the easiest thing to go ahead and get done, from a lower financial impact, also quick turnaround times, that the community can see that we're, we're addressing these needs. It's brought to our attention, we're addressing it. If we can do this, what else are you willing for us to do? Phasing that out into the next step, into what you all, you saw in the plan as tier two, that's when we start looking at some more capital projects. And usually, the way we always, in our experience, we like to do this, we want to get the most bang for our buck. So we want to be able to weigh the value of a new development or an improvement relative to how many people that can positively impact. So generally speaking, what you want to do is try to have a strategize approach to where you were taking a large chunk of your initial investment and putting it in highly populated areas, but you still also have to have another wedge, a little bit smaller wedge, that you can start investing in some of the other areas, because at the end of the day, regardless of where you live in, in a community, you don't want to see something being built twelve miles away from you, and it takes five years of funding to come back to your area and all that. So it's going to take a balanced approach, working as a team of elected officials in order to effectively strategize how we distribute that money in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In our last work session, one of the things that kind of excited me that you said was when you talked about Newton County's being ready for aquatics. And so when I was looking at the recreation program trends, it looks like it was about seventy-one percent, and I wanted to know, because that's something that I've been working towards since two thousand and nineteen, how did you come to that conclusion when you did your actual report? Was it just based off of the individuals that put in what they wanted, or how did you come to that conclusion where now is the time for us to begin to move into that particular area?
Sure. Sure. So we do work across the nation, a lot of communities, in particular here in the southeast. One of the first things that always gets brought up to us as a wish list from the community and from staff and elected officials, is some sort of aquatic or water recreation amenity. We really don't have anything here for a population of a hundred and thirteen thousand, more or less where we stand today, with a significant projected growth over the next ten years, not having some sort of a quality water recreation facility, whether that's a true aquatic center, or a very well-done community pool with splash pack components, something along those lines. We're a little bit behind the times on that. The other, the other reason why we came to that recommendation simply became, simply was because of two parts. One is programming opportunities and programming deficiencies. There is still, even though, to Commissioner Sanders' points, the data that we receive through the public input wasn't statistically valid by any means, or substantiated enough to say that, no, this is a legit desire, and we can, we can validate that statistically. But it's still an obvious need, and we are, as going back to the programming discussion, we're a little bit limited in one side in terms of our current programming. The park staff is making great gains in trying to diversify their program portfolio, but here in the southeast and metropolitan Atlanta, in terms of quality of life and economic development, bringing people in, some sort of water recreation is definitely something that we would typically see in a portfolio for a community such as ours here in Newton County. So while I cannot statistically validate those needs, I do believe that is a legitimate need here in the community that should be investigated further. I will say that the one thing that we made an informed decision on as regarding to the aquatic facilities is a very, is to be very particular about the types of aquatic amenities that would be in that sort of facility. At the end of the day, historically speaking, competition pools, which have a very high cost of operations and maintenance, versus the user rate and return rate on your investment is significantly low. Competition pools, generally speaking, are a complete money loser. You're never, ever going to recover your rate on that. That being said, it is still typically a need in terms of recreation programming. We still typically have to have that type of facility. So what that does is that tells us that we have to be able to balance the operational needs of an aquatic facility by offering more diverse facilities. On the polar opposite end, in terms of cost recovery for those maintenance and operation funds, family leisure aquatics, where, where it has interesting features in terms of perhaps a zero-depth entry splash pad with a shallow pool, free, free swim area, perhaps some sort of slide features or other, or other structures associated with it, that is where the real community interest is, right? Because the competitive pool segment of our population is very, very small, right? But the need to support our families in terms of water recreation is substantially larger, so we get a substantially larger volume. Setting an effective cost rate structure for that, that doesn't place a burden on the families of Newton County, but also still does some cost recovery in order to offset those expenses, is usually, if you do it right, is usually somewhere to a little over fifty or sixty percent, typically speaking. And that's offsetting the cost of the competitive pools. Furthermore, if you do it even greater, there are examples in the metropolitan Atlanta area, City of Cummings is a great example, where they're money makers, they're actually making profit off of these facilities. So they're not losing money annually and all that. So again, we see that as an opportunity for the community, and that's why we wanted to throw that out there as an option for you all to give us some feedback on.
So I know one of the things that I imagined or envisioned when this was brought to my attention from the constituents in the district that I represent, was to have like a joint facility, not a standalone aquatic center. So it'll be a recreational facility as well, in addition to that, to kinda help balance that maintenance and operation. So you have that recreational piece that's going to actually help kind of recover maybe some of the expenses that you would have from that aquatic facility. In addition to that, having that facility as well, making sure that there was, in addition to just the recreational piece, that of course, there were also, like we talked about the competition pools, that there were regional state competitions that would come in and that would generate that revenue as well, to actually help add with some of that maintenance and operations as well, to kinda offset as well. So I just want to know how you came to that conclusion, what your thought process was behind it, and if you see that that is something that our community should be moving forward, how we actually would do that?
Certainly, certainly. I do still think that it is something that will be, that we would strongly recommend considering going forward with. The, again, kinda going back to what we were saying earlier about trying to spend your money and get the most bang for your buck and all that. You may have noticed that the specific area of the county where we were recommending an aquatic facility is not in any one particular district or location. It's at the convergence of the districts that have the most people, that would, that people could be able to effectively have that equitable access to that facility. So I think it's two parts. It's right location, right mix of facilities, and it's, it would be great, and it would actually put you in competition with some of your partner, your surrounding communities in terms of competing for some of the competitive swim, or even just drawing people out because you have a brand, you have a new, you have a new facility, and they want to go play on the new slides, not the old pool, right?
You know, sky's the limit with aquatics. So you have therapeutic option, you know, with the therapeutic pool, you've got swim lessons, you've got a lot of opportunity to bring in a lot of revenue. Ninety-nine percent of standalone aquatic centers do not break even, we all know that, but when you add recreation components to it, and you're talking about these different amenities, that's how you make sure that you're able to break even. So we're, so, I'm sorry, so, so we have the families and the children and, and the teeny-weenies, the swim lessons, the, the, just the social activities, and then you have the, the fitness, you know, aquatic exercise is huge now. So you're looking at aquatic exercise opportunities, fitness, health and wellness, all of the pillars that, you know, we're trying to bring in to not only this master plan, but what people are looking at nationally, and especially for Newton County here, it's so important. So there's great opportunities to, to have a mix of, just like you talked about, multi-generational facility within an aquatic center.
Absolutely. You just defined my vision. So thank you for answering that question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a concern with the backlog, maintenance backlog you spoke of earlier. So refresh my memories, is that backlog of maintenance issues spread mainly across our, our, our high-population type venues, City Pond and Turner Lake? Are those, are those maintenance issues mainly there? And where else would they be? Just refresh my memory, I'm sorry I don't recall.
Sure, and I apologize, I didn't bring my backup spreadsheet that had kinda had it all broken up, but I do know that out of that seventeen, I think it was about seventeen point one million dollars in deferred maintenance that we identified, about four and a half million of that was at City Pond, and I believe about three and a half million of that was at Turner Lake. So yes, your, your larger, bigger impact facilities in terms of, in the, concurrent with that, the rest of the facilities, they all had common shared issues, right? In terms of providing a quality level of recreation, making sure that we have clean, adequate ADA access to all of your facilities, because we're a little outdated on some of our facilities, so we're not meeting those code requirements. Make sure that lighting is sufficient, upgrading our lighting systems and all that, specifically with some of the turf, or some of the ball fields, make, bringing the turf up to a higher level of play, not necessarily in terms of competition, but safety, to limit liability out here, and then just general upgrades in terms of site furnishings, fixtures, goals, court surfacing, things along those lines. So it's very well-spread, but yes, Commissioner Edwards, to your point, the bulk of that is focused in those two specific facilities.
Right, thank you. So, and you hit on, you hit on a word that worries me with those issues, is liability, right? So not only do they have the potential to become aesthetically unpleasing, right, you have the liability type issues, that exposure for the county as well. And my second question was, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman? My second question was, how, I don't recall from my previous meeting, how in tune are we going to be in, in seeking out corporate, corporate sponsorships? I mean, where, where do we, where do we plow that into our overall plan? We've got some very, very big players in town and coming to town, that I'm sure are very much in, wanna be in tune with the communities, and some of the projects we've, we've, we've heard talked about two weeks ago and, and tonight as well. I believe we have an op, a golden opportunity to capitalize on some of our, some of our major corporate players that are here and, and coming here. So I just want to keep that in mind as we move forward with, with the plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Can I, can I jump in off of that question? Can you tell us what you guys have did, because I know you say you did this all around the world, can you tell us what you have did in other communities as far as seeking out corporate sponsorship, I guess?
So with us, we have a, we generally identify potential opportunities, we haven't actually gone through and done specific identification of, you know, of sponsorship opportunities in other, in other communities. We basically essentially laid the framework for it, and Katie may be able to speak a little bit more towards that.
So, yes, you have a lot of potential for corporate opportunities, you've got some great big players here, there, there's even just for programming growth. You have, I took a look at your chamber and, and the existing organizations that are here, you know, people that you could reach out to and that you could partner with on all different levels, not just programming, but also for facilities or events, whatever it is, you know, you're looking at. In our master plan, we do talk about utilizing different revenue sources to help support and to help grow this revenue. So sponsorships can be one of them, grants are another. You guys seem to be in pretty good financial shape as a county, which means that a lot of the grants are, are matching grants. So if somebody comes in and they say, hey, you know, we're gonna give you a million dollars, you would also then in turn provide a million dollars towards whatever it is you were building or, or whatever it was, service you were providing. So there's a lot of opportunities. I think, you know, with corporate sponsors, that is my forte. I, I have been in Parks and Rec for thirty-five years, and that's what was big for me, you know, creating relationships with communities and businesses, and growing those relationships and bringing those people in. And it's all about common philosophy. It's all about what they can, what they can get from this, the benefits, you know, the exposure, you know, how that relates to this company and how it can help expand their brand, their continued growth as well. So if it's a youth center, or if it's an aquatic center, or if it's a football field, you know, you reach out to these community members, these, these corporations, based on their philosophies and what they are involved in and their interests are. That's how you pull them in. So it's strategic when you start to work on that, and when you start to develop your plan as to what you're going to do first, and how we incorporate all of that as a whole, if that helps at all.
You, you turned on the light bulb in my head, thank you. I do have two examples that I could show. John, City of Johns Creek, Georgia, immediately after we did their comp plan, I believe this was in, their new town park, there was distinct need for, the, the community asked for a dog park in that facility, and of course, they expect a higher-level facility in Johns Creek, so it was gonna be an expensive dog park. And I believe out of that, out of that recommendation, one of the things that they pursued was they partnered with Purina, if I remember correctly. And Purina contributed a significant amount of funding into the development of a very, very nice dog park. I wish I could have taken credit for the design, but it was not me. But that, that was one- But that, that was one thing that came out of the comp plan. And I believe it was Cherokee County, Georgia. We did their comprehensive plan in two thousand two, if I remember correctly. That plan identified the need for a community aquatic center, and I believe in that specific instance, they saw the partnership opportunity, a sponsorship opportunity with, I forget, drawing a blank, the, the local hospital system. Because to Katie's point, an example of the dog park, if it's a dog park and you, and they have an opportunity to correlate dog park quality with Purina, well, that's a win-win for the community as well as the corporation. And the example of the aquatic center going in on the money, one of the requirements was that they had to have therapeutic aquatics as part of that facility. So the hospital system was able to put in money and basically be able to support and give staff training in order to facilitate those programs. So that's two that I could think of, I'm sure that there would be more as it pops in my head later on.
There, there's so much potential. It, it, it's exciting, you know, for these master plans, you know, when you move forward and you commit. Commissioner Henderson, you know, you talk about these older master plans that never got developed. That is so common across park and rec agencies across the nation. You know, the intent is good, people change, people come and go, and then it just kind of sits and collects dust, right? We're using it as a, you know, an end cap on our bookshelf, which is unfortunate, and we have a lot of those in, in, in a lot of agencies. So the fact that you're here today, and we're starting fresh, and we're reaching out to this community, communities change, demographics change, your demographics has, have changed from ten years ago or twenty years ago to where you are today. And they're going to be changing again, as, you know, Aaron mentioned, even at, by twenty thirty, you know, even our, our racial demographics are changing. So there's a lot of exciting new things coming, but when we talk about master plan, and we talk about growth, and we talk about new facilities, and what we want to do in new programming, we have to look at the community today and move forward so that we can accommodate those people, if it's more younger children, you know, and younger families, and still the older population. We've got, you know, a, a growing population, so you still do have a lot of youth, and then you have, you know, a, a population that's slowly getting older as well. So it's great because you have an opportunity to create some wonderful things here. When we went and we walked the parks, there are, there's, there's just a lot of deferred maintenance, and it, I don't know why that happened, if there was just never money set aside, or enough money set aside, but you do have some safety issues. And it's a safety concern when, you know, you're on the infield of a baseball field, and the outfield is three feet lower, and a kid runs to catch a ball, and he's falling over, tripping or breaking his ankle from that three-foot difference. So that's dangerous. There are some things that need to be taken care of and upgraded right away. That's the most important thing here, moving, and then, and then talk about all of the exciting things to come. This is going to be your legacy. You are going to commit to something incredible and wonderful, and you have the opportunity as a, a whole to make this happen and, and, and make this your legacy.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanders.
Have you guys had the opportunity to look at Georgia Tech's aquatic center? Have y'all been there, the fitness center in Georgia Tech? I've done some business there, and that was one of my visions at the Georgia Tech. Of course, we can't be as elaborate as Georgia Tech, they have alumni that spend a lot of money. But with their aquatic center, it pays for itself, not just the, the pool area, because we host fitness conventions where they have conference area, which is where my idea came from, and making it more functional and multipurpose. And they also have in the inside, commercial spaces. That's what pays for it, because you have businesses in the inside that are purchasing or leasing space and selling product, so that pays for the expenses. So if you get an opportunity, take a look at Georgia Tech's aquatic fitness center, because they've done the work and it, it works, because you don't only have to use it for aquatics. Conventions can come there and host a lot of events, because they have the classrooms and the conference rooms in the inside. So it's multipurpose, and also what I actually vision, the whole entire fitness center is on the top. So you have people who are also purchasing memberships. So the, the building is so multipurpose and functional that it's paying for if that thousand-dollar pump breaks in that pool, which is very expensive, because I've spoken with a lot of commissioners who have pools, and they, it's like, don't get it, because of when those pumps break, it costs thousands of dollars just to fix. But with having something in the inside that's taking care of that cost would help with the cost of aquatics.
And I think that's, I agreed a hundred percent. And you know, when Commissioner Mason talked about a, a multi-use facility where you have recreation components along with aquatics, that's what I built up in Illinois, built sixty-three thousand square foot facilities with aquatics, an indoor aquatic center with a zero-depth pool, the lazy river, the competitive swim components. And then we had fitness, we had three full-court gymnasiums, fitness centers, meeting rooms, babysitting, eighth of a mile indoor track longer, because it's, surrounds three gyms instead of two, so it's more palatable to be inside, working out on an eighth of a mile indoor track, those types of things. So you're right, when you bring in those extra components and the fitness components, look at, look at the success of the YMCA's. It's a perfect balance, because that's how they, they cover their costs as well. A YMCA would come in, and a YMCA would never come in and build just an aquatic center, possibly in one location. So when we looked at, at some of these components in the aquatic center, there's also fields and everything that go with that, so that you have, you know, programming areas, programming space, and within that aquatic center, there would still be programming elements, whether we added fitness components to it, you know, there, we talked about some of that. So yes, you make it a, a multi-use facility to help cover costs. Absolutely.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, and I just, just going to just kind of, just kind of talk back a little what you said. You said that older master plans, sometimes they get old and dusty, and you don't, you don't do them, and you said, but the bigger picture is that in the, in the future, this master plan there makes it better. But I, I've struggled since I've kind of been a little bit longer than, than most, and how could I tell, you know, a family, like a little boy just worked on my house with his grandfather, Mr. Hardeman, DJ Hardeman, when he went down to factory shows on a hot day, him and his stepfather with his mother, and he got drowned, and we didn't have nothing, nowhere for them to, to go out safe and swim, and he got caught in one of the stucco. So I, I mean, and so I, I, I struggled at trying to tell him, say, well, hey, you know, we should have did better. We should have had a, a pool and a location where everybody was, could, could go to it and, and swim in it. But we didn't, because, you know, some of the older master plans got a little dust on it, and we just swept it away. And I said, well, we're going to do something better in the future. And now with the future here, we're forgetting about the stuff that we had kind of talked about. And so, you know, and I, and I hear it all the time, especially here, and I, I heard our county manager, and he said, you know, noon one. How can there be a true noon one when we don't bring all the people together, when we don't keep our word, when we don't do what we're supposed to do? I mean, this is the only thing I'm saying. I'm, I'm saying, I still say, no matter how much dust get on the plane, you're only as good as your word. And I'm just asking the question, now maybe this to the board, you know, how good are we with our word? We should keep our word. If there's a project that's undone in a community, then we should want to do it. If we net a fire station for five million dollars, we did it unbudgeted. We voted to do it, and I voted with it, because there was a need in a community for a fire station. And then we manned it. We didn't say, well, hey, we, we paid for the folks to be there and train them. That was good. But yet, when you think about a, a little old, maybe a million, a million and a half of splash funding, and we got more splash money than we, than we actually needed, and doing something for a plan that just had dust on it, just, everybody moved on to something else different. But I think that, this is me, I still say, if we're only good as our word, and I, and I, you know, I always hear the noon one, but noon cannot truly be a one until we pull everybody into it, until we keep our word. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? You have anything else that you want to present to the board?
No, sir. Other than, as Dwayne noted earlier, after our final round of public presentation of this information, we'll be, we will be able to wrap up the draft report, and we'll be submitting that to staff for them to distribute to. Obviously, it will have a lot more in-depth information for you all to review and analyze. So as you look at that information, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to myself directly or to Dwayne, and we'll be happy to assist you with anything you need. And again, we appreciate your time. I know it's a lot to digest, but thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Got a second motion that we adjourn, please?
What?
It's a motion by Commissioner, I don't know who, I think, well, the Commissioner Henderson the second, by Edwards. All in favor? Thank you, we stand adjourned. Thank you.